Good morning. This is Luke Revin, Assistant Manager here at East Brandywine Township. I'm addressing you in my capacity as the online moderator for this work session of the Board of Supervisors. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and to protect the health and safety of township officials in our residents, the Board is conducting this meeting via webinar. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the Township's YouTube channel. Public notice of this meeting was posted on the Township's website consistent with Act 15 of 2020. The agenda for this meeting was also posted at ebrandywine.org/AgendaCenter and is visible on your screen. Board members Jake Winters and Kyle Scribner, as well as myself, are physically present in the Township Meeting Hall. Vice Chairman George Sherbach, Solicitor Mark Jonas, and other members of the Township staff are joining us remotely. Members of the public can hear us, but your own phones and computer microphones are muted, so we cannot hear you. To enable an organized meeting, we're using the following procedure. As with in-person meetings, I ask that all participants wait to be recognized by Chairman Winters before speaking, and that all comments be directed to the chairman. To be recognized, you must first ask me, in my capacity as online moderator, to unmute your audio connection. You may request this at any time via the chat feature located on the left side of your screen. Each person recognized by the chairman should state their name and address before asking a question. Before I turn the meeting over to Chairman Winters, I would like to draw your attention to a typo on the published agenda. We have a new format. Item number two is correct. The new format is that public comment on agenda items are early in the meeting. The agenda item... Eight, sorry, Roman numeral issue there. Roman numeral number eight, or V with three I's, is public comment on non-agenda items, and that is at the conclusion of the meeting. So as soon as I turn the meeting over to Chairman Winters, this would be the time to ask to address the Board on agenda items. Good morning, Chairman Winters.
Good morning. Thank you, Luke. Welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors Morning Session Work Session on Thursday, December 3rd. Great, thanks. I want to public comment on agenda items. Is there Luke?
No one has indicated a desire to be unmuted for agenda items.
Okay. Let's move on to approval of the minutes of the previous meetings. We have the special meeting of October 10th. We have not approved that. Do I have any motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of October 10th. Oh, I'm sorry, I can't approve this one.
George, do you want to?
Yeah, I will make a motion to approve the October 10th, 2020 special meeting minutes.
Second, call in favor. Aye. Thank you. Move on to old business. East Brandywine Township's Act 537 Sewer Facilities Plan Update that was tabled. Luke?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll get the ball whirling here, and then we have a few guests who can speak on this subject as well. Just a friendly reminder to the Board, I'm getting some feedback that it is difficult to hear. Board members, please use the microphones. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your recognition on this issue. By way of a brief introduction, note that this morning, staff is seeking permission from the Board of Supervisors expressed in the form of a motion to distribute a draft of the Act 537 Sewer Facilities Plan to the Chester County Planning Commission, the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission, the Pennsylvania Natural Heritage Program. On your screen is a typical Act 537 Plan Update process showing where we are now and when the draft plan will again be before this Board to consider formally adopting it. Plan Consultant Joe Baldes of Hydratera Professionals and Municipal Authority Chairman Mike Corbin are joining us this morning to answer any questions the Board may have on this draft. Can you hear me, gentlemen?
Yeah, I'm in the audience there, Luke. Hopefully everybody can hear me. This is Joe Baldes.
Hi, Joe. Mike, are you there as well?
Yes, sir, Luke. I'm here. Thank you.
Good morning.
With that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Mr. Corbin and Joe, Mr. Baldes. So if you want to briefly describe the Plan Update Process and where we're at, and if you could provide the Board with some background, a narrative, that would be great.
Mike, you want me to take that away, or you want to go ahead and give the presentation?
Why don't you go ahead, Joe, and then I can jump in if there's any other points of clarification.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Supervisors, for allowing me to give this brief update on the Act 537 Plan. I don't want to go into too much detail, but I don't want to assume that any Board member understands the 537 Plan. It is rather complicated, as you can tell just by this update process. I can tell you that several years ago, the Supervisors approved a proposal to go out and create a new 537 Plan Update, which included mailings out to each and every homeowner, parcel owner in the township, and the questionnaire asked questions about their on-lot disposal systems, if there were any problems with the on-lot disposal systems, and if there were any suggestions or if there were any complaints. We received an overwhelming response rate to the questionnaires that went out and tabulated those, entered them into a database, and showed some potential malfunctions and other items related to the questionnaire in the tables in the Act 537 Plan. After that, we had to go out and do what Pennsylvania DEP calls a Tier 2 evaluation, which includes a physical, I don't want to say inspection, but a physical site visit to verify that the survey was completed correctly, and if possible, meet with some homeowners. We did that on numerous occasions and met the criteria of DEP by looking at these on-lot systems. Following the completion of that Tier 2, we began populating the data. Not only did we look at the on-lot disposal systems, but we looked at the four treatment plants that serve approximately half of the homeowners in the township. And we provided details related to condition, the extent of the gravity sewer collection system, and the capacity available in each one of those treatment plants. After all that data had been, you know, basically looked at and reduced, a summary of the plan was presented. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to read that summary. I could go into it if you'd like. It is, I share via email, and it is shown on, I guess, page 6 of the plan. As I indicated, the plan briefly explains the extent and condition of the four wastewater treatment plants. Apple Cross Treatment Plant, which is the largest, has a treatment capacity of 300,000 with a potential to upgrade to 500,000. I guess one of the Achilles' heels of the whole 537, of the Township's sewer facilities is that there is a requirement for subsurface discharge. The Apple Cross Treatment Plant will run out of subsurface discharge before it runs out of physical treatment capacity. Therefore, we believe that it is essential to locate any additional disposal areas in the township that could be used for complete use of the Apple Cross Treatment Plant. Two of the three remaining sewage treatment plants also use subsurface discharge. And as I said, it's really important that the township consider where we can dispose of waste and, you know, find any available land area. Now, I think many people have asked me, well, why don't we go into one of the larger wastewater treatment plants, maybe Coatesville or Downingtown? And I can just share with you that many years ago, probably before most of us were involved with the township, the Supervisors decided to opt out of the Dara Plant. And there are five township members down at Dara, and they are watching their capacity very closely, so... And then Coatesville is pretty far from East Brandywine Township. It would require quite a bit of infrastructure to get into that system. And of course, your 537 Plan would have to show that if that was something that the Supervisors elected to do. So we're kind of stuck with the four treatment plants that you have and the subsurface discharge requirement.
Joe?
Yep.
Was it that, at the time, was it that the Supervisors declined, or was it that Dara was full capacity?
At the time, Mr. Scribner, at the time that the decision was made, and I don't know exactly what year it was made, but I can tell you, it was in the infancy of the Dara Plant. I believe that, and don't hold me to this, but I believe that Dara extended an offer to East Brandywine, and East Brandywine decided to keep all their sewage facilities in-house, have some local treatment and local discharge. So there was capacity. They just opted out of the treatment plant and the joint authority down there.
Okay.
So, I mean, that boat's basically sailed. I actually had a discussion with Dara yesterday with regards to a different subject and mentioned that, you know, hey, maybe we should be sending some wastewater down to Dara, and the executive director kind of giggled because he knows that each and every member of municipality is guarding that capacity very closely. Any other questions with regards to the treatment plan or the need for subsurface discharge?
No, no questions here.
Joe, if I might jump in here for a minute. I think the point here with the 537 document is it's a planning document that kind of looks in a forward fashion so that the township can consider making sure all of the sewage flows in the township are handled going forward. And as you mentioned early on, about half of the flow is treated via the facilities you just discussed, and the other half is on-lot systems. So looking forward down the road, let's make sure that these systems can handle growth and additional flows here in the township. Is the capacity in the existing tube plants adequate to handle future development here within the Coatesville area? And are the on-lot systems managed, maintained, and operated properly so that those folks who use those don't have problems down the road? So it really is a document that's important. It's a planning document, doesn't really set forth rigid requirements on this, but from a planning perspective, let's make sure that all of the township residents are, you know, taken care of with respect to treatment and disposal of the sewage.
Yeah, that's right. The plan is also recommending that the township consider use of a sewer management program to protect those existing on-lot systems. Many of these systems, particularly those that might serve homeowners that have come from public systems, you know, outside of the township, have not received the maintenance that they should receive on a regular basis. It's common knowledge now in our industry that these on-lot disposal systems need some care. They need to be pumped on a regular basis. Somebody needs to take a look at the pipe network going to the system. They need to take a look at the baffles and such that are within the septic tanks, and certainly need to take a look at the disposal fields. So the sewer management program is somewhat flexible, but it basically serves the purpose of, I don't really want to use the word enforcing, but it suggests maintenance that needs to be done to each and every on-lot disposal system. And sewer management program that we are proposing would allow us to collect the information in a database and then have some detailed information so that the Supervisors and the municipal authority can make very educated estimates of who might need to connect in the future, where the pockets of failures are, and how we can get those systems into the public sewer. Many of these folks won't have any area for disposal once they connect to the public sewer system, and that is part of the reason we're recommending, you know, that the township consider each and every area for land disposal.
I think, Joe, just to kind of pick up from a planning perspective, the on-lot systems are perfectly fine from a sewage management perspective. They've been used for many years, and if properly designed and if we have adequate suitable soils, the systems will function properly for a long, long time. However, they do require a level of maintenance to make sure that things like baffles don't degrade and drain fields don't get plugged up. So assuming they're in an area of suitable soils and hydrology, and assuming that they're maintained with fairly basic techniques, they should last for a long, long time. The alternative is, if they aren't maintained, or for whatever reason, the soils aren't suitable, providing public service, public sewage to these areas can be quite involved and quite expensive. So one of our goals here is to try to keep these individual on-lot systems functioning properly so we're not faced with, you know, an enormous cost down the road. Now, again, from a planning perspective, if we have areas or pockets where systems, for whatever reason, haven't been sited in an area that has suitable soils and there's a malfunction situation in these pockets of areas, then, okay, what's the alternative? How could they be connected to public sewage if that's kind of the option of last resort? This is where the planning document helps identify if there's an area that's going to have problems or is having problems, what can be done, and where can they connect from a planning perspective? And that's, again, another important feature of this document.
I have a question. Currently, are all this, a lot of this subsurface water being handled by the Country Club?
I missed a question. It was a little garbled. I'm sorry.
My question is, I guess, right now, over the past several years, does the Apple Cross Country Club deal with a lot of this subsurface water from the system?
The Apple Cross Country Club basically accepts the treated effluent from the Apple Cross Treatment Plant. It's stored in lagoons, and then it is sprayed discharge onto the Country Club itself. There is a small area of drip disposal that is, that exists in the Apple Cross Country Club, and that is also being used for disposal of treated effluent.
Thank you.
But, Joe, the capacity of the spray irrigation, if you will, and the subsurface drip disposal, how much does that really handle in terms of the total flow that could go to Apple Cross?
Yeah, so the Apple Cross Treatment Plant can handle, as I mentioned before, 300,000 gallons per day. The existing spray discharge system at Apple Cross has approximately 138,000 gallons of capacity. And then the drip system there adds another 20,000 gallons roughly. So about 158 or slightly more than half of the capacity at Apple Cross can be discharged into and onto the Apple Cross Country Club. Yeah, the golf course, not the Country Club itself.
So any future flows connecting, then we look to have them provide subsurface disposal capacity for that flow that connects kind of over and above that capacity you just mentioned.
Yes, and the municipal authority went through a recent upgrade at the Apple Cross Treatment Plant that will allow that treatment plant to pump treated effluent over to some future developments. The Mapleview Development and the Weaver Track were both considered as part of that upgrade. I believe with some additional infrastructure, will be, the treatment plant will also be able to discharge towards the Plank Farm. But that hasn't been ironed out at this point.
Joe, excuse me, or Mike, as far as, I guess, the Weaver Track and the future needs and the Mapleview, are they the only two locations that, as of right now, that are in the immediate future that would be able to provide land for the municipal authority to handle additional drip other than their prospective projects?
So the Mapleview is currently permitted to accept the return of treated effluent from Apple Cross in the same amount that's just discharged into the treatment plant. Although planning documents show that there's an additional 50% that is available, has been designed, but just has not been permitted at this point. And we're following a similar format for the Weaver Track with 150% disposal area. And obviously, you know, there are a couple of communities in the township that I don't want to say there are confirmed malfunctions of the on-lot system, but the age of the developments and maybe, as Mike had mentioned, the soils in these developments basically would cause, could cause some malfunctions down the road. And I think, because this is a planning document, it makes sense to consider sewer-ing those areas sometime in the future. Again, that's why we have the sewer management program, to try and make sure that we go out and take care of those systems that can discharge into decent soils in and around the homes without creating any problems. So capacity is there for some, or discharge from some of the developments, but not all of them. And I think that the township is really going to need to have good information to make that decision on whether somebody is included in the public system.
So how does this relate to our, to the Township's SADO, the 350, 47 for the 150% set aside? How does, can you just kind of run through the process for, I guess, for just say the, I guess, the Weaver Track hasn't started yet, I guess, the Mapleview Track? How would that come into play? How does that relate to the township regarding the extra set aside? Compared to our actual ordinance?
Well, I believe the ordinance pretty much mirrors the resolution that the authority passed. And that was initially, the 50% was initially set aside for failures in the disposal system itself. Recently, we have received word from the golf course that although their agreement indicates that they can and will accept approximately 138,000 gallons of treated effluent for spray irrigation onto the golf course. In years past, they have struggled to discharge that amount onto the golf course, particularly 2018, 2019, when we had all those major rainstorm events. They really didn't need the irrigation water that much. So they were struggling to store that and discharge the treated effluent. So the 50% is really important as we move forward. As the Apple Cross Treatment Plant approaches that magical number of 138,000 gallons, it becomes more and more difficult for the golf course to discharge that entire amount onto the golf course itself. And therefore, that's why we're looking to have that additional 50%. I'm not sure if that answers your question or not.
Well, I guess that does answer the question, I think, to a degree. But as far as, I guess, my question is, if it's, if we're requiring, if the Township's requiring an applicant to, you know, dispose of their own, of their own treated effluent on their own site, which would be the 100% of their needs, and we're requiring them to have a 50% additional area set aside in case they are to have a failure down the road, is it the municipal authority's position is that the township should be looking into actually use of that 50% for other needs and not just at developments? Or, and if so, would we have to modify our ordinance to reflect that?
I'm not certain about modification of the ordinance, Mr. Scribner, but I do know that the 537 Plan does assume that some of the existing developments could, existing developments with on-lot systems could be converted to public systems and would discharge into those disposal fields that have an abundance of capacity.
Just to clarify, Mr. Baldes, that was Supervisor Winters' question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I can't see anybody. I don't remember Mrs. Bur. But thank you.
Joe, if I might just expand on that a little bit. Take, for instance, Mapleview and the ordinance that we have, resolution regarding the 150%. I think it gets back to an earlier comment here, is that any new connections into Apple Cross, we ask them to provide that disposal capacity for the treated effluent that they're generating. So that land that they set aside and that drip field capability that they're providing is primarily for their own treated effluent, such that they can handle that 100%. And if, for whatever reason, the soil conditions or the groundwater conditions can't handle that, there is that contingency area then that they can go to for disposal of all of their treated effluent. As we're seeing at Apple Cross and we're hearing from the golf course operator, they're struggling during certain weather conditions to even handle their pre-agreed-upon treated effluent. So if they can't handle it, it builds up in the lagoons. And when the lagoons reach capacity, then that treated effluent has to be discharged to the stream, which gets to be very expensive. So that's another reason why we look to have that additional land if we need it based on limitations that the disposal field might have or might encounter. That's one of the primary reasons that we have that extra land, because there's nowhere else to put it. There's no stream discharge over at Mapleview.
Yeah, no, I mean, that makes, that makes absolutely good sense. I understand exactly, you know, the concerns of the municipal authority and, you know, and I know the last several years have been wetter than normal seasons. And I'm just wondering, do we need agreements with the owners of the land in order to be utilizing their land for our Act 537 plan? Some kind of agreement between all the parties that, you know, that 50%, you know, could be used for their future needs, but it also could be used for the future needs of others? I think that might be maybe prudent of us to have some kind of agreement to just avoid any concerns or misunderstandings. Would you, would you agree?
Well, I think that's a point well taken, and it's something we, I think, need to consider.
You know, could, is there any way we could use the dam that was just drained as a lagoon?
Well, that's a thought.
You know, I don't know if anybody looked into that.
We have not, and probably would require a separate agreement with the Chester County Water Resources Authority. I don't know how receptive they might be to that, but that's an idea. Because as we found out over the recent couple of years with all the wet weather and so on, the lagoons at the golf course have become full. And, you know, we're struggling now to kind of manage that water, make sure that we reapply as much of that water as we can during the growing season so that we have capacity in those ponds during the colder months to store the effluent. Last couple of years, we've had to surface discharge because that capacity wasn't there. And that gets to be more expensive for us in terms of treatment chemicals and so on.
I'm sorry, this is Luke Revan, I'm going to chime in as well. I can't claim to speak for the Chester County Water Resources Authority, but I was present at a workshop they hosted where they discussed their plans. In addition to the fact that that basin or that lake is drained, its finished condition will be as a dry basin. But I just.
Yeah, no, I know that the intention would be nice to be able to, be nice to utilize that. I mean, how many, what is that like? There has to be a lot of volume on that. I don't know what the calculation was, but.
Right. What I'm suggesting is if we discharge even in that vicinity, it would immediately flow out of that unless it was a flood condition. It's designed only to function as an impoundment of water when in a flood.
I understand.
Okay.
I understand.
One of the things we are doing is we're kind of working with the golf course operator to identify any other land that might be available for spray irrigation, just to provide us some additional capacity.
I mean, I can't speak for George, but I think, I like, I like the, I like the work done so far on this, on this update. And with the only exception that I think that we should have some kind of agreements in place if we're going to include, if we're going to include land that the township does not have an interest in now, I think that we should have some kind of agreement in place before we move forward with whatever owners that would, that would require. And that way, the township is not in a position down the road to have, to be accused of some kind of taking or anything. So I think, wouldn't that be better to plan for, before, so to eliminate issues later?
Yeah, I think you have a good point there, Jason. And I think that had been considered by the municipal authority in the past. Again, I'd have to go back and look at the resolutions to understand what they actually, the resolution that the authority has and then the ordinance that the township has to review exactly what's included in that. I think the municipal authority's been approached by developers recently to allow that 50% to be used by others. But I think it's a very good point, and certainly I think we need to take a look at that and see, see how that procedure would be played out.
I think that's worth, definitely worth pursuing, Joe, as you mentioned. And we can kind of look at the details of just how that might, might be implemented and how that might work. That way, it gives us some kind of future protection if need be. Because clearly, I'm kind of speaking from an engineering standpoint, but clearly, we would want some contingency in that design. And if the system turns out to function better than we expected, and maybe the soils and hydrogeology is better than we thought, and maybe only 100% of the field is needed, then that additional 50%, if that could be used for other flows that the township has, it would be very nice to do that and not run into any conflicts with the developer. So we do need to look at that and see just how we might make the system a little bit better there.
Okay, well, I'd be more than happy to have you in these talks, or maybe brainstorming and Mark could, Mark can meet with Tom and your chairman or the municipal authority, just kind of brainstorm on how we can figure out what our future needs could be and what we need to do to have these agreements in place. And then that way, you know, maybe we can report back to the board, maybe Mark could.
Sure, I think that's a good idea. We can do that. Joe, I don't know how, what that could be incorporated into the plan, or if that is maybe something that runs parallel to the planning process. That way, at least the 537 plan can kind of move ahead, and this maybe is a side issue or a parallel issue that we need to address.
Yeah, I think, I think that makes great sense. And I'm, you know, more than willing to get together with Mark or whomever to discuss how we can move forward. My opinion would be that I don't think it's necessary to include it in the 537 plan. And you'll see where we are now on this little flow chart that Luke has provided. I actually penciled in the red, but Luke provided it. And you can see that right now, we're really just requesting that we submit this 537 planning document to the reviewing agencies. I would be surprised if we got zero comments back, because it is kind of a unique plan. I doubt that the county has seen many plans like this. Upper Euclid has a similar type of format where they treat their sewage and then drip discharge a lot of it into the system. But I don't think the county's seen, you know, maybe more than one 537 plan that includes the amount of drip, subsurface discharge similar to East Brandywine. The point is, I guess, is that we will likely get comments from one of the planning agencies or the health department or something with regard to drip disposal or questions about volume of this drip disposal. And so there is still an opportunity for comments and revisions to the 537 plan before the supervisors formally adopt it.
I think that, you know, right now, I think we're at the point that, you know, if you're asking the board to move forward with it, I think it might be better off just seeing if we can't get, you know, these agreements in place because it is included in the, in the future needs. You know, as far as the DEP, what are their comments on, on this 150% set aside and the use of the 50%? Are they going to require the infrastructure to be constructed at the same time as the development? Or are they okay with doing that and just leaving it in place and not in use? Or, or I'm not sure what the, has there been any feedback from the DEP?
Yeah, there has been some feedback, particularly with the Mapleview Development. They heard the voice of the township when it was requested to have that 50% area, but they were not going to take a physical stance on that. And I'm sure that might be from a litigation standpoint, I don't know. But they were not going to take a stance on the additional area because of the way the Mapleview sewage facility planning module was written. But I've had numerous discussions with, with Pennsylvania DEP, and they are now viewing Apple Cross Moore as a regional treatment plant. And so I believe, once they see this 537 plan, they would support the addition of the 50% at, you know, at any new land development, any new land development on the parcel in the township. So their thoughts, I believe, are changing at this point. Initially, it was thought that the 50% would be used only if there was a problem with the drip system. But the way the 537 plan is written in my discussions with those folks at DEP, they're now viewing Apple Cross Moore as a regional treatment plant. So it would open up the door to bring in existing developments, those homes that have on-lot systems with failures, without having to force them to provide drip area.
Mr. Baldas, Kyle Scribner here. This is, you've asked our input on this for months now. I believe the last one was June or July. So here we are at the 11th hour again. But I have had no questions or concerns with the process. And I'm curious to see, I think this is one of the proverbials, times of the essence with our grant. What is your take on this in terms of getting something at least started on this in movement process?
Yeah, right now, we've had to ask for two extensions on the, on the grant. And if we continue to delay this, we will most definitely have to ask for a third extension. I can tell you that they've been pretty lenient in the past, but I think their patience is running out at this point. And, you know, to me, it makes sense to get the planning document out for review, look at, look at maybe modifying an agreement, as Mike had suggested, in parallel with approval of the 537 plan. Because I believe any agreements would really be included as an appendancy to the 537 plan, would not really be a part of any of the write-up in the plan. So I certainly would hate to see all this effort go to waste and the township lose money from a grant simply because we couldn't, you know, get it through the reviewing agencies in time. So my recommendation is to move on, but, you know, I want to hear the supervisor's opinion.
I would agree with you, first of all. Second of all, if you could give certainty right now, which I know you can't, that they would grant us a third extension, I would say, put it off again. Our solicitor, Mark Jonas, you're on the phone, what is your thoughts?
It seems to me that if you're submitting it just for comments, that it probably makes sense, and I'm trying to catch up here, that you certainly don't want to risk the grant if there are other reviews or comments perhaps you were to consider at the same time. You certainly can do that concurrently, but it sounds to me that you certainly don't want to risk the grant and you're not, you're not officially approving this, you're just getting it out for comment. So that seems to be a practical solution.
I would agree.
You can see by the flow chart that essentially, we need to get out, we need to get it out to the planning agents, the reviewing agencies, that being the county and the township planning commission, the department, the NDI. And then we'll get your comments, we would make the revisions, and then the municipal authority, or I'm sorry, municipality would basically request any comments from the public. There's a 30-day comment period where we would need to address every comment that the public makes in some fashion. And then, once all those comments are collected and addressed, the plan would be finalized, and next one, we would ask the board of supervisors to adopt the plan. So there still is some, there still is some time to make some subtle changes to the plan, excuse me. But I'm just afraid we're going, we're going to run out of time. And, you know, like I said, I hate to see the township lose any money with regards to that grant.
Mr. Sherbeck, do you have any questions on this?
No, I don't, you know, I don't want to lose the grant money. So that, to me, is the key issue. If we have to move forward so we don't avoid the grant money, then that's what I'd like to see done.
All right, well, then I'll go ahead and make a motion for East Brandywine Township to submit to the reviewing agents the sewage facilities plan, Act 537, as stated in this said conversation.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Pardon the interruption, Mr. Chairman. Before we move on to the next item, Joe, may I impose on you to stay on the line? We have a sewer facilities planning module for development, the Weaver Track, a little later, and I'm going to need your help, I think.
Okay.
If the board is so inclined to be respectful of Mr. Baldas' time, I'd support that. I'm just not equipped to speak on the details of that, the sewer facilities planning module.
Yeah.
And so I might as well use our consultant.
Yeah, let's push it up now so Joe doesn't have to sit. Mike? Where is that on the agenda? Is it?
That would have been under ordinances and resolutions for considered. It would have been item number 7D.
All right, so, so this is the Resolution 18 of 2020. Joe, what is the actual change in the planning module?
This is, okay, so the previous planning module that was approved by the supervisors was with regards to the K. Hubnannian property, I'm sorry, the K. Hubnannian proposed development. That was approved, submitted to DEP, I'm sorry, approved by the supervisors, submitted to DEP, approved by Pennsylvania DEP, the Weaver Track, you know, that was back, I want to say 2010, 8, 10, I can't remember exactly, but it's been some time since that's been approved. Since that approval, there's been, you know, the school districts come in with a proposal, and now we have a different developer in there looking to do something a little different. The planning module, sewage planning module that you guys have in front of you now has been revised since that previous planning module to address more homes. It basically had in there 150% for drip disposal prior. This one has 150% drip disposal in it as well. And I believe this is the first time that the supervisors are seeing this planning module. And I don't really know that there's anything that I need to alert you to, because everything seemed to be in place for that.
Right, if I could just take a step back from a, from a, from a planning perspective, the Weaver Track development has preliminary plan approval from this board of supervisors. It does not have final plan approval. The plan that the board gave preliminary plan approval shows the wastewater being treated at the Apple Cross plant and disposal fields on-site. So pipes go both ways for this development.
That's correct.
So, so what was shown on the, on the preliminary plan that got board approval is disposal fields for the treated effluent. And then this is, this is a technical one, so I'm going to, Joe, please interrupt me. It would have a, at least one pump station for the, for the raw sewage to be sent to the Apple Cross wastewater treatment plant.
There is no pump station for raw sewage. It'll, the proposal is basically flowed by gravity down into the Bonsville Road pump station, and then Bonsville would bring it over to Apple Cross. There would be, there are currently pumps at, at the Apple Cross Treatment Plant that will send the treated effluent to the Weaver Track. The Weaver Track would then build either a separate or a combined pumping station to dispose of the treated effluent on-site. When I say separate or combined, there was some discussion. When I say separate or combined, there was some discussion in the past that Mapleview and Weaver Track could possibly work together to build one disposal system. And certainly, I, as it, from an engineering standpoint, I think it makes sense that the municipal authority and the supervisors have one building, one pump station to maintain rather than two. However, I'm not sure if, if that can be designed and completed before we need drip disposal. So I feel like maybe the horse is out of the barn on that one. We may ultimately have two pumping state, treated effluent pumping stations side by side, one on the Mapleview Track and one on the Weaver Track.
Yeah, I think that's currently the thinking just because of the timing. The Mapleview development went ahead a little bit quicker than Weaver. So it is kind of a separate system right now.
Okay, so, so the action item would be a motion of the board of supervisors to pass this resolution for us to pass on to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection.
And this is consistent with the preliminary plan approval for NVR?
I'm going to rely on Joe's determination there. To the best of my knowledge, it is consistent with the preliminary plan. Joe, do you disagree?
I do not disagree. That when we reviewed the planning module, we reviewed it. At the same time, we reviewed the preliminary plan for Weaver. The two are what I feel married together in a decent fashion. And, you know, they complement each other. So that planning module was specifically written for the, the NVR development. And I think it addresses everything that needs to be addressed in that development.
Okay, I mean, I'm okay with that. Do I motion?
George, you want to make your motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution 18 of 2020, the Sewage Facilities Planning Module for the Weaver Track.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Mike, for spending your morning with the board here and the residents, helping us understand your plan update. And we appreciate your, your work on this.
Thank you for the invitation.
We'll go ahead with a kind of a separate group here to talk about that item on the, on the drip fields and the additional capacity and how we can best address that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, guys. I'm going to drop off here unless there's other questions for me. But it seems like you guys can handle it.
I think we're good, thank you. Have a good day.
Yeah, you all, thanks again.
Thank you. And moving on to the police contracts, we are going to be tableing this momentarily to allow the board to meet executive session one last time. So we'll be reporting back for that. Let's move on to, there are no subdivision zoning applications. Let's move on to ordinance one, 2020, the amendments to chapter 105 entitled assemblies public in section 105.2 definitions, revise section 105.9 by adding a new section entitled block parties. And I believe this is, is in response to a hideaway event that had started this. So, can I, Luke?
Yeah, yeah, so the township has existing code pertaining to large public assemblies. That language does not address the use of township roads for block parties. In response to a resident inquiry, as you referenced, the ordinance task force drafted the proposed language, which has also been recommended to the board for passage by both the planning commission and the ordinance task force. At this board's October 15th regular session, the board of supervisors directed staff to advertise this draft ordinance. At this time, I'd respectfully ask the board to consider adopting ordinance one of 2020.
Any questions?
Kyle, George?
None. Yeah, yeah, I'll make a resolution to adopt ordinance one of 2020, amendments to the chapter 105 entitled assemblies public in section 105.2-2 definitions, revise section 105-9 and by adding a new section entitled block parties.
I'll second your motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to resolution 16 of 2020, establishing the tax rate for general township purposes, tax rate for fire services and annual recycle fee for the calendar year of 2021. Luke?
Yeah, this is me again. I would, thank you for your vote on item number seven A. I would draw your attention to the fact that the language so adopted makes reference to a portion in the fee schedule that references what an application would cost. And that's not currently in there. So we've created a new agenda item essentially, and that is I need to update the fee schedule. So, so the board should expect that staff will be working on an updated fee schedule. As it relates to item seven B, which is resolution 16 of 20, there's two resolutions for your consideration this morning that are part of the budget process. At the regular session in November, two weeks ago, the board of supervisors adopted a preliminary budget, which is now available for public review on the township's website and in the township building. The, that budget will be considered for adoption as the official 2021 budget at your December work session in two weeks. In the interim, we have two resolutions that are some housekeeping. The first of which is establishing the tax rates for the, the real estate tax for general purposes, the, the real estate tax for fire services, and the fees associated with our solid waste program. The resolution before you has rates that are precisely the same as the current year. So there are no tax increases proposed, and this is consistent with your preliminary budget's revenue estimates.
Good. Any, any comments? Any comments from anyone?
None.
Do you have any motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 16 of 2020, which establishes the tax rate for the general township purposes, the tax rate for fire services, and the annual recycling fee for the calendar year 2021.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Moving on to the resolution 17 of 2020, authorizing and directing the transfer of unencumbered funds.
Yeah, this is me again. Another matter in the preliminary budget that you passed at your November regular session is there was a column on that report that was called anticipated year end. And in that column, there was a recommendation for transfers from the unencumbered general fund to the unencumbered capital reserve. This is just administratively segregating funds to be used for capital projects. The source of this money is the result of the township's fiscal policy, prudent fiscal policy throughout the year. So essentially, this, this figure represents revenues over expenditures in the current year. And at this time, I'd respectfully ask your permission to make the transfer of those funds to the capital reserve.
Any comments?
None.
None.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution 17 of 2020, which authorizes and directs the transfer of unencumbered funds.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to public comments on non-agenda items.
I actually have some. Mr. Jonas, you with us still?
I am.
Okay, I had asked you going on two weeks now for, if you would forward me any correspondence with the board and either your individual capacity or the majority of the board. And I was wondering where that, where that stands right now.
I'm not sure I understand the, the request. The, you know, as a routine matter, I communicate with either the board as an entirety or with individual board members. I've done that with you, as you know, with regard to the Apple Cross matter where you seem to be the point person. I also communicate sometimes directly with just the board chair, which is part of the structure. So I'm not really sure I understand the request.
Let me elaborate. A policy decision was made on the 18th of November, one in which I, as a supervisor, voting member of three, was not included on. I brought this to your attention, and I had asked you for correspondence relating to this issue. I then asked you for an October 1st through November 18th for any correspondence with the supervisors to certify to me that maybe a violation of sunshine law hadn't, hadn't taken place. I was not responded to with that information. So I'm wondering, one, what, what your thought is on that? If you believe, or my concern, if a violation of sunshine law did occur?
Well, number one, I'm not going to discuss legal matters at a, at a public meeting. And number two, I believe, and I'm confident that I responded to you appropriately and as fully as, as, as I can.
I'll read your response. I will respond as appropriate and directed by the board of supervisors as a whole and the chairman. That was your response, so.
Well, excuse me, Mr. Scribner, we're not discussing legal matters.
Oh, there's no legal.
Excuse me, we're being, we're in a lawsuit with our former township manager. And that is a legal matter that is pending, and we're not going to be discussing that right now.
I never said anything about that.
What is, what are you discussing? What's your question?
Beat, beat, back the truck up. What was, what did you just say? We're in a legal?
We're in a legal lawsuit right now.
Okay.
Yes. So what is your question?
So you're saying that?
We don't speak about legal matters in a public setting.
Did I bring up that situation? I don't recall.
That's what you're referring to.
You know what I'm referring to now, you got?
I've read your emails.
Okay, so you read my emails, but you didn't respond.
I don't think there is a reason to respond. You didn't have any substance.
So I'll ask one more time.
I'll tell you what, why don't you just go and voice your concerns? Voice your concerns, really. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, excuse me.
You can interrupt me all you want. The question has been asked, nothing have I discussed legal or personnel matters at this discussion.
So you don't want to say, you don't want to discuss a legal matter, but you want to beat around the bush about a legal matter? It's not going to happen at township meetings, you're out of line.
I'm asking our solicitor.
And I'm advising our solicitor not to respond to you.
So, Mr. Solicitor, my question was asked to you. Did the situation violate a sunshine law? You refused to answer, correct?
Mrs. Scribner, Mrs. Scribner, I believe your questions at this public meeting are entirely inappropriate and unnecessary, and I will not respond further on this matter to you.
Okay, so my next question is, do you feel the citizens of East Brandywine Township should be, should be required to pay for a right to know request by a township supervisor for decisions that are being made without his authorization?
Excuse me, I can answer this.
I asked this listener.
Excuse me, I can answer this.
I asked.
Actually, the township has paid for a right to know request made by a sitting supervisor myself. It didn't seem to bother you then, Mr. Scribner. It shouldn't bother you now. If you want to answer the question, we can have executive session to have your, and answer all your questions. But right now, this setting is highly inappropriate.
Well, again, I haven't spoke of anything that's legal in nature.
Just because you're not speaking of the actual, you're not saying that the key words that would be included in it, you're obviously beating around the bush with legal. So I think we should move on. You voiced your concern, I think your questions have been answered to the best that anyone who's going to be answering them in a public setting. If you would like to have executive session, and we could discuss any issues, personnel, you know, legal issues, then, then we should schedule that. Maybe perhaps we could do it next week when we have the executive sessions to talk about the police contracts.
So I'll, I'll continue my questions because again, I've not stated anything that's been.
Set it back and forth, why don't you just read all your questions? And then we'll just move on.
Mr. Sherbeck, are you with us?
Yes.
Okay, so, so I was informed that, that part of a decision, again, I'm not using any terms of this decision that occurred on the 18th, that you were privy to and you were okay with, is that correct?
No comment.
No comment, okay. So what I'll be doing is Supervisor Winters stated that he had reached out to me via a, a phone conversation to have with me prior to this decision being, being decided by what I would assume right now was, was two members of the board, and what I assume was violation of sunshine law as well as procedural law. So I will be submitting the right to know request. I just wanted the taxpayers to be aware of what, what I was doing, why I was doing it. To my knowledge, policy decisions are being made without my knowledge as well as procedural decisions. I had asked our township solicitor to include me in any correspondence regarding to this in his capacity. I was told that he would respond as appropriate, directed by the board as a whole and the chairman. So since we're not getting anywhere with that, that would be my request, that I'll submit my right to know request, which is, which is going to, going to occur next week. But I just wanted on record, this, this question to be answered by the solicitor and the chairman.
And that's, and that's fine, Mr. Scribner, you, you can fill out right to know requests all day long. You know, if you feel that you're not being included, which is completely false. You've been included in every email. I can't make you read emails or respond.
So on, so on the record, Mr. Winters, you're saying I've been included. I just want to clarify that, I've been included to every email, yes?
Yes, you've been included in every email.
Sent to you by the solicitor, or you to the solicitor as well?
Uh, yes, I believe so. Or is that the direction from the board? Or if it's at the direction of the board, yes.
Okay, so you don't have a problem then with the solicitor.
Decisions being made by one member of the board or by anything other than a majority of the board. You've been asked to weigh in on everything. In fact, we actually followed what your, what your request was. So I don't understand why we're doing this right now. But the bottom line is, submit your questions, they'll be answered, let's move on.
You just, you just stated on the record, though, that I've been included on every email correspondence.
You've been included on every email correspondence, whether it was you, us having an executive session, and it was formalized with me emailing the, emailing our solicitor, or if you weren't included on it as all three of us as a board member. So yes, no decisions have been made behind your back. That is just, that's just absurd.
Okay, except for the 18th, correct?
No, in fact, I'll have a discussion with you after the meeting if you want. And with executive session, George, if you want to stay on the phone, because you, we, the board followed your directions, sir. So I think we're going to be done with this.
Well, I'm sorry, elaborate on that. The board, say that one more time, the board followed my direction?
Correct.
Okay, how so?
This is inappropriate, we'll talk about executive session as it involves lawsuits.
Supervisor Sherbeck, you're able to stay on for an executive session?
Yes.
Okay, great, because I would love to get some of these questions. And I feel as though the taxpayers don't need to be paying for, for these decisions.
Okay, well, I mean, unless you wouldn't just like to email the board your questions, and we'll respond. If you don't want to, if you want to do executive session, I don't really care. Either way, it's up to you, but I think at this point, we're moving on. So has there been any notices, Luke, or?
Let me take it one step back. There's, no one in the audience has indicated additional comment on non-agenda items. It seems to me like it's appropriate at the, at the agenda item, which is nine notices to note that the board of supervisors will meet in executive session to discuss personnel matters immediately following this meeting.
I would say legal and personnel.
Legal and personnel, thank you.
As far as executive session following this, why don't we just go ahead and schedule this executive session for the, for next week? That way, we can have the, we can deal with everything at one time.
Oh, actually, I'd rather get it accomplished now.
Well, unfortunately, I can't make it right now, so why don't we schedule for next week?
How convenient.
Mr. Scribner, excuse me.
Your excuse, go ahead.
Okay, are you done? Are you done with your interrupting meeting?
My last question, was the last, was the last decision, policy decision, was that ratified at a public meeting? Mr. Jonas?
What decision was made, Mr. Scribner? Has, has there been any intermination? Again, has there been termination?
I never, I'm not even talking, I don't know what you're thinking of.
I know exactly what you're talking about, stop.
Mr. Jonas, was, was a, is a ratification needed for a decision that was made, policy decision by the board of supervisors at a township meeting? In fact, is it not required by the next exact township meeting?
I, I don't know to what policy decision you're referring to, Mr. Scribner.
You don't? Okay.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.